Anyway, hey, how are y'all my friends? Who's presenting for your, your tactic?
Now that I've said that, the next time I do it, I'm gonna totally watch this.
Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Education's May 2024 work session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Horn.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few announcements before we get into our work session agenda. The Strategic Planning Committee will meet next Friday, or actually, this Friday. Yeah, not next Friday, May 10th at 10:00 a.m. in this boardroom. And Ms. Christie will be providing us with an update on the committee's work just a little bit later this evening. And thank you again to everyone in attendance tonight. We would ask that you be respectful and courteous at all times and just be mindful that sound is carrying this room. So if you need to speak to your neighbor or take a call, we just ask that you step outside the room to do so. Are there any requested changes to this agenda? Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. First up, we have an announcement of our 2024-25 Board Student Representative, Ms. Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just say, this was a really fun committee to serve on, and we had some amazing applicants. And we would have been blessed with any of them. It was very impressive to see their resumes and the work they've been doing in our district. And this process began back in February with announcements and distribution of application packets to every high school. Rising seniors had until Thursday, March 21st, to submit applications to the board office. Fifteen applications and recommendations were received from students at Austin East, Bearden Career Magnet, Farragut Fulton Gibbs, Halls, Hardin Valley, and Powell High Schools. Once received, the applications were redacted of all personal information, including the student's name, school address, and reference names for the first phase of the scoring process. As Ms. Henderson announced last month, the selection committee consisted of Assistant Superintendent of Strategy Cory Lotner, Principal Spencer Long, current student representative Celeste Erdl, community member and parent Ashley Smathers, and community member and leader Dr. Susan Dalton, and myself as the board representative. The committee met on August 16th to receive instructions on scoring the applications in the areas of leadership, communication, organizational skills, academic achievements, community service, extracurricular activities, and recommendations. Each committee member submitted their individual scores for each application, and a total score was calculated and assigned a score of three for the top score, two for the second highest score, and one for the third ranked score. The three candidates who possessed the highest application scores were interviewed by the selection committee on Thursday, May 2nd. Once again, each committee member submitted individual interview scores, which were assigned a three for the highest, a two for the second highest, and a one for the third ranked score. The interview ranking scores were then added to the student application ranking scores for the grand total. And I don't think any of the committee members were shocked to find that they were faced with a three-way tie, because we had three excellent candidates. And so to say that the scores were close is an understatement. Due to the tie, the decision was put to a committee vote, and I'm happy to report that the vote was unanimous. So our 24-25 student representatives' term will not begin until July 1st, but I am thrilled to announce and introduce, and she is here tonight with her wonderful parents, Ms. Sophia Elkins of Halls High School. And I look forward to sharing more details about Sophia when her term begins, but traditionally, the incoming student representative will sit with the current student rep at our board meetings in June. So hopefully, we will all get to know Sophia a little better next month as she sits with Celeste. Please join me in welcoming and congratulating Sophia Elkins for being selected through this very rigorous process. And Sophia is here tonight. And so we did have a little fun this week. So instead of calling Sophia, we decided we would surprise her at school, which took a little coordinating with mom, because we have tennis going on, then there was rain. But it all worked out well, but because of that, Dr. Ryswick's schedule cleared up and Mr. Triblet's, so we had fun surprising her at school as well. So congratulations, Sophia, and we look forward to working with you. And you do not have to stay for the entire meeting if you do not want, because I know it is a school night, and it will be a long one. I'm just gonna warn you of that now, so.
Madam Chair and board members, I just wanted to let you know, so that we're not off in June, that Sophia cannot be here at our June meetings, because they have a standing commitment. I believe a family vacation may be planned for that week. So we will see her in July, and I just didn't want anybody to think she just wasn't gonna be here. Thank you, Sophie.
Awesome. All right, and thank you, and congratulations again.
Congratulations, Sophia, and I just want to thank Celeste also. You've been a tremendous student rep, and I love getting that perspective from our students. So thank you to both of you for your willingness to serve. Next up, Dr. Ryswick, I believe you have a superintendent's report for us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the chance to provide some updates. I would like to begin by welcoming the representatives from our Council on Accelerating Student Learning, who are with us tonight. The Council, or Castle, because we have to do acronyms in education, right? We can't just have words. Castle is made up of business, nonprofit, post-secondary, and community leaders, as well as teachers, administrators, and parents. In just a moment, they'll have an opportunity to share a bit more of the work that they've done over the past two years. But I want to take this opportunity to say publicly, say thank you to all those who have volunteered their time to Knox County schools. You'll see just how impactful their support has been to our schools and our students. As part of the Castle presentation, you'll hear one of our priority teams discuss what our community can do to enhance and support teacher retention and recruitment. So they're gonna share some of their projects in just a little bit. It's been a great group to work with, I'll say this, because I don't think I get to talk during the presentation, but it's really been neat to see people who want to give their time across the board. We meet about four times a year and just kind of talk through the four priorities, and they've all built kind of projects and/or recommendations in teams that they wanted to work through. And I'm probably stealing all Cory's slides when I say that. But it's been fun, and then part of that is, you know, they get to ask me any questions they want for 10 minutes. So we get to kind of through that, I always take more than 10 minutes. But it's been fun to see that, and just to see across all different groups in Knox County, just the excitement around education and just the ideas that they have. So it's been really good for us, for me personally, to have a group like that pushing us. So I'm so thankful that they're here. Over the next few months, you'll hear about this important, oh, wait a minute, sorry. Oh, yeah, here we go, we are right. So gonna talk about another initiative that we're launching, which is Teach Knox. I know we've talked about it a little bit, but it's actually a website that we're working on, and there's much more to the initiative. But this initiative was something that we began, we talked to the board about, initially as a recruitment and marketing strategy for Knox County schools, but it's quickly evolved into a more comprehensive project. Everyone knows we've faced the shortage of teachers nationally, and we looked at how we could do that. Jennifer Hemelgarne, her team really took a lead on this, initially working with an outside group to look at our practices and look at our protocols and just our turnaround time so that we could get everyone into education as fast as they could. So Teach Knox is our commitment to not only recruiting the best and most promising educators to KCS, but to intentionally and meaningfully develop our teachers and school leaders. I think that's the part we weren't thinking about that really started involving Dr. Wilson and his team on how do we coordinate and align all of our efforts to develop teachers we have, or maybe new teachers coming into education. So I urge all of you to be on the lookout for the launch of our Teach Knox website, which will serve as a one-stop shop for prospective teachers, designed to provide a tailored approach and a pathway to our classroom for future teachers, whether they're coming to us from a teacher prep program or another industry. So that's definitely been a big initiative that we've worked on, so it'll be launching soon. I also want to take this opportunity to recognize our great educators in KCS. Today marks the beginning of the National Teacher Appreciation Week, so I encourage you all to join me in expressing your gratitude to our teachers today and every day for our commitment to our students. I was talking to Dave Chiac in the back from UT, he's one of our Castle members, and said, "You know, every day should be Teacher Appreciation Day." I couldn't agree with him more. So tonight, I'm also pleased to announce that our commencement ceremonies for the class of 2024 will begin on May 16th, so next week, we start. And the schedule is aggressive for this week, this year, which is a good thing, because we'll actually be able to graduate seniors on time so that they don't have to wait really long. So, but that does mean two graduations a night, but we're ready. You have all heard me say that as a public school district, it's our responsibility to prepare the next generation for Knox County and their life after graduation. This year's class of seniors represents that promise. I look forward to attending each and every graduation and to celebrating the achievements of the more than 4,100 students who also walk across the graduation stage this month, one including my daughter, who will do that. So that will be fun. Actually, it's probably bittersweet, it'll be okay, though. Please join me in congratulating the class of 2024, including our student board rep Celeste, who will be graduating as well, so enjoy that. So please come, and I know a lot of you will be at the graduation. So Madam Chair, that includes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. Two graduations a night, you just won't eat dinner until graduations are over. Up next on our agenda, we do have that Castle presentation. So I'll refer to, well, I guess I'll refer to you, Dr. Ryswick, or Dr. Wilson?
I'll say this, as Cory comes on board, yeah. I'm gonna let her read through the beginning, and then we'll have the groups come up, so thank you.
I'm excited about this presentation.
It's a hot potato.
All right, so I will kick us off just by saying that Castle, you heard Dr. Ryswick earlier, is short for our Council on Accelerating Student Learning. And we have a few questions about Castle, just to frame the scope of this committee's work, what they've done for us over the course of the last two years, and to kick off some really exciting presentations from our priority teams within Castle. So you heard just a moment ago who Castle is. This is a committee of, this is a coalition of folks who represent our community at large. These are our business leaders, our community leaders, our nonprofit leaders, our post-secondary leaders, as well as some parents, guardians of students, teachers, and school administrators. The purpose of Castle is pretty simple, but it is a two-way street. So this is a group that has been charged with not only making recommendations for improvements to us and informing the work that we do, but also being champions and advocates for the work of Knox County schools. So you heard from Dr. Ryswick that every meeting either began or ended with an opportunity to have something of, you know, an information exchange. Members of the committee learned about what was going on and what was current in Knox County schools' work. They also had an opportunity to ask questions from their perspective, what they are hearing in their unique communities, and what they have questions about, so they can take that information back to their respective networks, and they can share a little bit more about the work of Knox County schools from a different perspective. And so how do we do this work? This committee has given of their time for the last two years. They have met quarterly for the last two years, and they've been working on priority-specific projects that actually were generated by Dr. Ryswick's transition team. So when he became superintendent, he pulled together a group of a pretty broad subsection of the community and said, you know, what is superintendent, do I need to do? What do we need to work on? And four projects bubbled up, and you're about to hear a little bit more about those four projects and where they've led these teams. Some teams you'll hear have diverged from their original projects. They've kind of outgrown their work, and they've moved on in other directions, and others really took those projects and ran with them. And so last but not least, I'll end you with, you know, why does Castle exist? You've heard Dr. Ryswick say time and time again that we are uniquely positioned in Knox County to prepare the next generation of students, but that we can't do this work alone. And so it really does take a village. Tonight, you're gonna hear from a really small but mighty subset of our village, and we're excited to introduce you to them. So I believe it's Ms. Janet Morgan who's kicking us off, is that right? You get to go first. Did you know you got to go first?
Oh, great, okay, you have a friend, there you go. Thank you.
And you can just click, it should be the one to the right, as you want to talk with her.
Okay, so we are presenting on the Excellence in Foundational Skills. I guess the first priority. So our project was to design a community-wide marketing campaign advertising what it means for a child to be kindergarten-ready and how families and community organizations can build readiness skills in children under the age of five. And then that's our team over there. I'm Janet Morgan, I'm a parent. I have a student at Farragut Middle School, and I had a graduate at Farragut High School last year. And I'll let you introduce yourself.
All right, and to the distinguished chair and illustrious members of the board, it's an honor to present. And my name is Vincent Jones, and I'm a faith leader within the community. All right, so essentially, our findings. We had the opportunity to do a deep dive within this last two years, and we noticed that we wanted to bridge some of the gaps in regards to communication. We wanted to ensure that families that may be struggling with getting access to the information regarding foundational skills actually had the opportunity to do so. And we also noticed that we wanted to make the process a little easier for family members to access that information as well. And we also wanted to make sure that we cast the net wide, right? That we have a wide distribution of information so that we can ensure that every single child within Knox County is ready when it comes time to go to kindergarten. And our team also recognized that there is an impact in preschool. We looked at some of the research coming from the state, and we know that if our three-year-olds and our four-year-olds, if they arrive prepared, we understand that that can make a huge impact, not only in regards to their academic success, but it will make a huge impact for their potential careers to come.
So our action items, we talked a lot about updating the kindergarten readiness targets and having it available in multiple languages and the distribution of that. We talked a lot about how it needs to be with the health department, it needs to be at the library, the laundromat, anywhere and everywhere we could think of to get it. We talked about having it easily accessible on the Knox County schools' website so that people didn't have to search for it. We developed a QR code so that they could just take a picture of it, and it would take them straight to it. We produced a, well, we didn't, Knox County, we didn't do it, but Beth Lackey worked really hard in getting a public service announcement to generate excitement and share resources. And one of our team members talked about helping us get it at the gas stations, so it plays on the pumps, and just different ways to get the information out there. And that's a picture of the one-pager that should be available to everybody. One of the things we talked a lot about was, when they come to kindergarten roundup, that's too late. And so they need to have this in their hands a year, two years before that, so that they know. And the ones coming to kindergarten roundup, a lot of times, are not the ones that need the information. So we have to figure out how to get it to the families that need it sooner. Okay, good.
Boys and girls, you have been working so hard all year. Who is ready for kindergarten?
I am.
I'm ready.
I'm ready for kindergarten.
I'm ready.
I'm still listo.
I'm ready.
Is your child kindergarten-ready? Use the QR codes to find information on Knox County schools' preschool programming, how to register your child for school, and a list of skills to practice at home to make sure your child is ready for kindergarten. We want all of our young children in Knox County to thrive by five. And by partnering with our families, we can make this a reality and ensure that every child in Knox County is kindergarten-ready.
All right, so it is our goal, it is our hope and our desire that every single child within Knoxville is ready for kindergarten. In our closing reflections, we just had an amazing opportunity to interact and to meet with a variety of different people throughout this wonderful county. We also realized that it was a very small commitment, but it is our hope that it will have a tremendous impact as well. And one of the things that stood out to our group is that Knox County schools, they're listening. They're listening to our questions, and they're also implementing our ideas as well. And one of the things that we noticed in our subgroup as well is that Knox County schools has a genuine interest in our input and a genuine interest in the schools and the success of our children. So thank you all so much.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm excited to introduce our great educators in every school group. And as our charge has been, we did recruit some more members to be a part of our presentation tonight. But our
But our project was to identify some opportunities and strategies to invest in teachers, increase teacher retention, and enhance the teaching experience throughout Knox County Schools. And we had a lot of robust discussion over the last two years with this challenge that, as you'll hear later, is not particularly unique to KCS, but that we think Knox County Schools might be really well-positioned to do some great works. And so with that, I will let Paula Hancock start us off.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Ryswick. As you all know, because I've stood up here several times, and you know this is near and dear to my heart, in terms of identifying opportunities and, and strategies to invest in our teachers, to increase teacher retention, and enhance the teaching experience, especially for our children. And we know that the most critical resource, because you've heard me say it before, that has denied our students is an experienced and a fully-certified teacher. And we have acute deficits, as the superintendent had alluded to about some of the teacher shortages, that actually threaten our students' ability to learn. So not only does it threaten our students' ability to learn, but it also reduces our teacher effectiveness, and that's important, because we want to make sure that we have effective teachers. Effective teachers are the most important school-based determinant of student educational performance. And to promote student success in school, schools must retain those credentialed teachers and assure that teaching remains an attractive career options for the college-bound student. To recruit and retain these talented students, our school district did something that was phenomenal, and they did something that was historic, and we appreciate the approval that you all have done, and that is, we had to address the inadequacy of teacher pay. And we had to eliminate that and close, or helpfully close, the gap on the teacher pay penalty, which is critical to building the teacher workforce that we actually need. You heard me say in the past, and I also will quote again today, that that proposal for that increase for the salary schedule was a major, major breakthrough, and it is representative of our superintendent's intent to make this historical investment into one resource that is imperative to our students to succeed. So Knox County Schools is now, what we have found was one of our challenges, where we were, where, what we were facing was not as unique, because we have experienced the teacher shortages, but Knox County, because of that one decision, is now poised to be a leader nationally and in the business and talent work. Not only the approval in the study of the Evergreen Comprehensive Salary Study, which gave us a review of compensation as well as talent, there was the creation of the Talent Department, and also this external review helped us to launch in one year, and this is why that makes it so historic, was able to launch it in one year, so we're looking forward to that. And also, the launching of the Business and Talent Division, which aligns, because we know we've done some compression of some of those positions and reallocation of some of those positions, but we are aligned and have the opportunity to align the talent resources and instructional priorities.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ryswick, board. I also have been for another board several times. I'm a, I work for a community, I guess an industry partner to the school system. I'm also a graduate of Knox County Schools, and in five days, if we're all lucky, my daughter, who's a Central High School graduate, will graduate from the University of Mississippi. So I was happy to be invited to be on this team and honored to be part of it, and all year long, for the past two years, I've shared that I'm on this committee about attracting and retaining high-quality educators in every school, and that's what I tell everybody. And I thought it was all about pay, it's not all about pay. Great schools start with great teachers. You can have great infrastructure, wonderful school buildings, and a wonderful curriculum, and if you don't have a good teacher, you don't have anything. So we've got everything we need here in Knox County to, to have the best school system in the state. We believe that city and county leaders should come together, and, you know, John, you actually stole our tagline about what if every day was Teacher Appreciation Day in Knox County Schools. We want to instill that kind of, that kind of feeling. We had a great video, too. It's probably not as cool as that K-12 video, but I found this wonderful video about, had all these celebrities saying who their favorite teacher was. And in communication with Cory here, there's an idea about making maybe a Knoxville or Knox County-based, you know, our celebrities. We have plenty about who their favorite teacher was and how they impacted him. My favorite teacher was Ms. Jennings in Gibbs High School, geometry. If it wasn't for her, I would have dropped out of geometry and changed the course of my life. So we've all got one. I'll turn over the next to David.
Good evening, Madam Chair, the board, Superintendent Rysnick. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this, this working group. It has been just truly a wonderful experience. And, you know, my name is Dave Chek, I oversee a lot of our educator preparation programs at the University of Tennessee Knoxville, and I think currently, there's about 300 of my graduates who are teaching in your schools, and we work closely together to ensure that pipeline and to avoid such critical shortages that we've seen and experienced lately. And I think a lot of our great efforts is that we are seeing more and more people who want to go into teaching. However, we gotta look at retention and that whole pathway. And reflecting on this process allowed us to kind of ask those difficult questions. I was very impressed, and our committee overall were just very impressed and humbled by the breadth of community stakeholders involved. It truly encompassed all the voices across the county, business leaders, teachers, higher education, our community colleges. And one of the questions that we always asked, who are we missing? Who needs to be a part of this discussion? Because it is a reciprocal, bidirectional relationship. Superintendent Rysnick was very clear, I need to hear from, you know, our district, I need to hear from Knox County, the members. And that was just awe-inspiring to hear that reflection of that collaborative spirit with teachers and community stakeholders, to really seek solutions to the greatest challenges that we're facing. And we're also very impressed with the innovation and the leveraging of Knox County resources to invest in its talents. And so my advice, if you're ever asked to be a part of the group, is to say yes. It was deeply engaging and just an incredible experience that becomes a living document that we look forward to seeing come to fruition. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, members of the board, I will say this, because I left this out of my introduction, and I apologize, so as Chris is popping up here, we did ask each priority team what they would tell prospective future Castle members, because this group is reaching the end of their two-year term, and so that is part of why you're hearing kind of this capstone achievement from each of these teams today.
Good evening, my name is Chris Parrott, and I am Senior Vice President of Marketing with First Bank. I stand before you a proud product of Knox County Schools, Carter High School, 1986, go Hornets. Prepared me very well to also be a first-generation college student at University of Tennessee. So proud to be on this committee is my way to give back to, to the wonderful education I received with Knox County. So our team was Career Empowerment and Preparation. The project that we were assigned is develop a clear vision of what career empowerment and preparation looks like at every level of the student's education and communicate it broadly. You can see, our team was made up of Beth Killen, Patty Weaver, Kristy Woods, Melissa Glover, John Bartlett, myself, Andy White, Jay Cobble, Angie Gerthert, and Susan Davis. What we found, we landed on working with field trips and how K through eight, they can have an impact from a career perspective for our students. And the one main underlying issue is we did not want to create any additional work for our educators. So, our findings, all field trips have the potential to provide opportunities to highlight careers that align with content standards. We need to examine access to trips for all students, and build on current work happening in KCS through alignment and coherence. Look at models created by Andrea Berry's Department in Education Innovative Research Grant. And include all stakeholders in ways to support career conversations by communicating with staff, with families, and community members, opening lines of communication with guest speakers, field trip sites, and job shadowing partners. So what are our action items? Our action items are a resource guide that will be created for KCS educators and will serve as the Castle Learning Experience Guide. Again, not creating any additional work for educators, but a resource that they can use. School stream forums and field trip forums will include career access and exploration. Create a template for community members and partners to highlight their careers, what the job responsibilities are, the career paths, and why that career was chosen. So some reflections on being part of this, this Castle experience. It's provided a more intimate understanding of the tremendous work done by our Knox County School System. It's truly eye-opening and amazing to see what our schools are doing for our students. And advice for future Castle members, for those thinking about possibly joining this group, do it. It's a great way to get insight from a professional educator, so we know from the, from the private sector, how we can support our students and be more impactful partners to Knox County Schools. Not only will you enjoy the fellowship, but the interconnectedness as well. So thank you all very much.
Good evening, board, thank you for your service. Hello, Dr. Ryswick. My name is Claudia Caballero, I'm the CEO of Centro Hispano, and I'm here today with Tyler Bolden, and he is the Executive Director of Big Brothers Big Sisters. We are part of the team that addressed success for every student, and we both serve on a lot of committees in town, and I think personally, this was one of the ones I have felt where I was actually working with the people I needed to, to get to the root of some of the bigger challenges that we have as community-based organizations and partnering with Knox County Schools. So it was really encouraging. I, I thought it was a really great use of our time, so I have, oh, I have the clicker, I was like, well. All right, so originally, we were brought together to develop a data-driven early warning system to better identify students at risk of becoming chronically absentee, so that supports could be deployed for more rapid pace. We are the team that did not do the assignment as asked. Mainly because, as a committee, we cannot develop a system for Knox County Schools. That's something that the school needs to do. However, we did dive in deeper and ask some questions that we thought needed to be answered before we launched into solving the problem. You can see the team here, we brought in a lot of great folks from outside, it was a lot of fun, there were questions that we wouldn't have thought about ourselves from our own point of view in the organizations that we serve in, so. We went back, and we said, okay, so the challenge is chronic absenteeism. So the first thing we need to do is narrow the scope. And one of the things we talked about was, there are plenty of kids that have, that their parents take them to Europe for two weeks, right? And they have high absenteeism, but they have great academic achievement. But what we really care about in this process, and when we're looking at this through Knox County Schools' eyes, is we're looking at those folks who have chronic absenteeism, but with low academic achievement, and that's called high-impact absenteeism, we learned. So that was the first thing. Let's define who we actually need to be talking about. The second thing we saw was, we need to segment the data in different types. Absenteeism is not absenteeism across the board. So that's the next thing that we identified that needed to happen. The third thing was, we need to be really clear about what things Knox County Schools can affect and which things they cannot. There are certain things that cannot be addressed by the school system, and so when we look at how to solve this problem, we need to identify which things belong to Knox County Schools, which ones belong to other parts of our community, what parts of these are maybe something that our community-based organizations can support. And then, this one was really, really important for us to, as well, identify the most impactful levers. We do not have the resources in our community to address every single problem in absenteeism, we know that. But what we hope with desegregating this data in the way that we're hoping to get the information, that we can actually see one or two levers that will really be able to support our children in reducing absenteeism. So our recommendations were to develop indicators, so that we could alert the school system when kids need more supports. Have early thresholds, so that we don't get them once they're already past, you know, the number of, of days that they can, they can, they're allowed to be out. This is something across the board, every organization talked about, is we need, it's someone local probably, but we need a partner that can manage data between Knox County Schools and the community-based organizations, because currently, it's every single organization going to Knox County Schools separately. It's not effective, it's not efficient, it's way too much work on Knox County Schools, and it's too much work on the community-based organizations. So this is really one of our strong recommendations. Reducing, and this goes, ties right into it, reducing the barriers to the data that's being shared with community-based organizations. Families want their kids to be working with these community-based organizations, we need to just streamline that data sharing in ways that keeps our families safe, but also provides the school system and the community-based organizations the tools they need to support these families. This is really important, I didn't know enough about this. The definitions at the state level of absenteeism are some, we can't affect that locally. So actually, as we move into the next phase of this, of this work, we're talking about, okay, now that we've identified locally what we want to do, what things do we need to advocate at state level, so that our school system isn't being evaluated across the board on what absenteeism is, but rather on the exact things that we're working on to, to reduce or to, and reduce the absenteeism. And then, this was a lot, there's a lot of work to be done here, we don't have this figured out yet, this is for the next group of people, or us. We need some, we need to look into some of the policies regarding transportation and PRZs, half-days and parent notes, some of these things, maybe we need to reform the incentivize, and incentivize the processes a little differently, but we didn't get that far in this, in this group. So those are the findings from our committee, and Tyler has a few more reflections.
Good evening. A few reflections from our time on the committee is, we have definitely noticed that KCS values feedback as a crucial tool for growth. Much of our comments reflect what the other groups have, have mentioned. There's a receptiveness to constructive criticism and suggestions, and it seems to be a culture of continuous improvement and development within the district. I want to highlight Dr. Ryswick's commitment to prioritizing students in all discussions, always ensuring that students' needs and perspective are always central to every discussion and decision that we've had. One thing that's not on here is, we've definitely noticed an enhanced willingness to partner with community-based organizations to provide services that, quite frankly, the district isn't positioned to address and provide. And so I want to shout out to Teresa Nixon, who has been instrumental in helping agencies like mine navigate that process on how to effectively partner with the district. And I hope we continue to invest in this space, and on behalf of nonprofits, you know, we're here, we want to help, and we wanted to be, we want to be treated like a partner. I want to make sure to acknowledge the achievements that KCS has made in the past two years, and as long as we hold course, keep students at the center of every decision we make, we know that we will only progress in the, the journey to become a national leader in creating stronger outcomes for youth. Some advice for future Castle members, number one is to exercise patience and refrain from making hasty judgments or decisions. I know I learned a lot in this space, and just taking time to understand situations fully before forming any opinions. There are 60,000 students, 60,000 some-odd students across 94 schools in our district, so there's a very high likelihood that future members of Castle will have some sort of personal connection to KCS. So I encourage future members to be aware of their experiences and biases that may influence their decision-making while on the, on the council, and just try to remain as objective as possible. And lastly, one piece of advice is, if Dr. Ryswick is, plans to give you 10 minutes of updates, I would plan for 20 minutes of passionate updates. Thank you.
And I think we just all wanted to say thank you so much to our Castle members, and I wanted to see, are we gonna gather them for a picture? Oh, that'd be great, absolutely. They work so hard. So before you all cut out, if you want to join us for a picture. That's really cool. Like with all of it, like, how do you want, do you want to do the whole board with it? Yeah, yeah, I think so, yeah. I know.
And after the little block. I'll, like, when we come back from the picture, I'll do, like, the air.
Wow, that was really neat. That's truly amazing work, and I just want to thank everybody again for your commitment to Knox County schools. That's really cool. Our next presentation, we've got Dr. Erin Phillips, and she's going to do a presentation on retention and promotion, kind of update us on what that looks like this year.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Ryswick. It is my privilege to be able to be here tonight, speak to you about retention and promotion. As we all know, before I get into this presentation, language changes, right? So as we've been engaged in supporting a second year of third-grade promotion and retention, we have changing language bills that have been presented, one currently on the desk of our governor. So just want to say that we in Knox County are doing our best to remain abreast of current information, the changes, the language of the law, and hopefully, we have some updates for you tonight that can help us just be firm in what we know concretely, and then anticipate what is to come next. So, we'll jump right in. So before we talk about retention, first, we need to acknowledge, what are we doing to prepare for promotion? So, promotion begins, I really was quite impressed with the Castle Group on excellence in foundational skills, recognizing that what we do in preparation doesn't just start when we enter kindergarten, but prior to that. But once students enter Knox County schools, it's now our job to think about, how do we prepare students to promote annually to the next grade level? And one of the ways in which we do that is by immersing them in high-quality instruction by a highly effective educator, and that, that instruction is based in the Tennessee Academic Standards with grade-level-aligned instruction. The other way that we do that is by having some routine assessment opportunities to get down to, what do students know? Assessment paints a current reality of the knowledge students have. And so, when we have the knowledge of what kids know, then we can be strategic in how we might intervene. And so, we give all kids access to grade-level learning in core instruction, but then we support students in small-group instruction based on their areas of need. So that assessment data allows us to see that students might have specific areas with grade-level gaps, or prior grade-level gaps, that we need to be strategic and intentional about supporting through small-group instruction. So when we think about preparing for promotion, remember that we're giving all kids access to grade-level learning, and we're supporting with differentiated small groups along the way to close any potential gaps that may exist. Now let's transition to thinking about those T cap scores. So, when we have students take the T cap assessment, they can score in four categories. They can score below, approaching, meets, or exceeds expectations. One of the common myths that's out there is if a student scores in the below or approaching category, they cannot read. That's a myth. I want us all to stand firmly in that knowledge. We have students who score below and approaching who are readers, who can read the words on the page of a complex third-grade text. So let's debunk the myth that students who are scoring in below and approaching can't read, because that's not factual. What is factual is that there might be some factors that impacted their testing that day. It may have been too complex of a text. They may not have built up testing stamina to persevere and sit for that long, to engage with numerous texts at one time, and answer a series of comprehension questions. Those comprehension questions require kids to go back to the text, to find evidence of the answers. Maybe we didn't refine that skill, or perfect that skill prior to testing. But what it does not mean is that, is that these students can't read. Are there some students who may not be skilled readers yet? Yes. The answer to that is yes. But stating that all students who score below and approaching are not readers is a myth. Students who score meets and exceeds expectation are demonstrating that they can meet grade-level expectation and engage with grade-level standards routinely. It means they've built up their testing perseverance, that they can read multiple complex texts and answer comprehension questions. And if they scored meets and exceeds expectations on the front end, and I'm not just speaking about third grade here, I'm speaking across the gamut, they can write and convey meaning through writing. So I want us to have a really firm understanding of what these categories might mean, and the myths that are out there regarding these categories. Let's talk about how we get to the fourth grade. So, the first way we get to fourth grade is by meeting or exceeding expectations on the test. So we had kids take the ELA assessment a few weeks ago. We anticipate getting scores back the week of May 20th. On May 20th, we'll find out kids who on that first go-around met or exceeded expectations. That's the first promotion pathway. The second promotion pathway option comes through retake option. In Knox County, those retake options will happen on May 22nd or 23rd. We did that for a couple of reasons. One, students are required to be at school on those days. Two, it removes a transportation barrier. And three, we have staff. And so, we tried to remove as many potential barriers as possible by allowing those retakes to happen on those two days. What can happen as an outcome of those retakes is that kids can score proficient, and they get to go to the fourth grade. Or, students might perform better than they did the first time, and then they have different options. Or they perform just the same as they did the first time, or potentially worse. However, what's important to realize is that the student's best score benefits them. So if a student scores approaching on the original take of the, of the T cap, but scores below on the retake, that approaching score supersedes it, and will move forward as an approaching student. So again, the student's best score serves to their benefit. So, once we have retake results, then we can think through the next two options, approaching and below. A third-grade student who scores approaching has some, we're going to talk about appeals in just a minute, so I'm not going to jump the gun. I'd like, it's very likely that I could do that. We'll stick with this one first. So students scoring approaching have options. They can choose to attend summer school. If they make that choice, they need to be there 90% of the time. This year, we have a 20-day camp. That means that they can miss four days and make up two of them to meet 90% of attendance. They also have to participate in a post-test if they choose this option, and demonstrate a 5% adequate, or 5% growth on the post-test, in order to move forward without any other obligations. Or, if a student scores approaching, they can choose year-long tutoring. They'll receive year-long tutoring through high-dose, low-ratio tutoring at a 1 to 3 teacher-student ratio, two times per week at a minimum of 30 minutes each time tutoring takes place. At the end of the year, the student has to demonstrate an adequate growth target if they choose this option. Let's talk about our below students. Students who score below have an "and," not an "or." They must participate in summer learning camp and maintain a 90% attendance rate. And, they have to participate in year-long tutoring. At the end of the third-grade year, when they take the fourth-grade ELA T cap, they have to demonstrate adequate growth to be promoted to the next grade. So I mentioned previously that there's some options for students who are in the approaching category. These options only happen when we meet some other measures. So, there's a third-grade appeals option. This third-grade appeals option has two grounds, ground one and ground two. Ground one is relevant for those students who score at the 40th percentile or higher on the Spring Universal Reading Screener, which we've almost already completed in all of our schools. What has to happen in order for this appeal to take place is that the principal, the current third-grade ELA teacher, have to agree that promotion is in the best interest of the student, and provide signed documentation of that agreement. New to the law this year is that the school district can apply for an appeal on behalf of a parent. However, in order to do so, we have to have consent. So Knox County is going to be sending out a message. I'm going to preview that message timeline for you in just a moment. In that message timeline, we will explain that we have to have consent in order to appeal on behalf of a family. We'll also explain that we have to have agreed upon, agreed upon promotion decisions from the principal and the third-grade ELA teacher, and have that signed documentation as well. That will be available for parents to sign in ParentSquare or through paper copies. Then there's the ground two appeals process. This is for students who have experienced a catastrophic event within 60 days of the T cap assessment. Catastrophic events might include a death in an immediate family, a recent medical diagnosis or hospitalization, things that are catastrophic and may impede the child's ability to perform well on state testing. This year in the law, they did indicate the "within 60 days" caveat, which is new language. Additionally, this year for third graders, there is a straight promotion pathway that did not exist last year. If students score approaching on the ELA T cap and reach the 50th percentile or higher on the Spring Universal Reading Screener, they can be automatically promoted to fourth grade and participate in year-long tutoring. Currently around that promotion pathway, there is no language regarding adequate growth. There's also no language regarding adequate growth for grounds one appeal at the 40th percentile. So that is a difference in the language of the law. Okay. It's a lot, right? Take a deep breath, we're going to keep going. So, here's the part that's tentative. I say it's tentative because currently, there is a bill on the desk of our governor waiting to be signed. I believe it was April the 25th when that was pushed forward, or 24th, one or the other, I could be wrong, which means that May 9th is the 10th day that it will be on the governor's desk, and we should have either a signature or a veto, or nothing. In the case that he does nothing, it means it passes into law. So, we're waiting until that time to find out with certainty what happens. But, there is a potential fourth-grade promotion pathway to fifth grade. Obviously, if students, and this is really for our students who have to have that adequate growth target, students who were meets or exceeds expectations last year, this doesn't apply, because they don't have an adequate growth target to reach. However, any student that had to participate in year-long tutoring this year in fourth grade is required to be promoted in one of these avenues into the fifth grade. So, the first and easiest way is that they score meets or exceeds on the T cap. The next way is that they meet their individualized adequate growth target. The state has a guidance document around that adequate growth target that has frequently asked questions. We did communicate those growth targets to parents when we received the information from the Tennessee Department of Education. The next way, if a student does not meet their adequate growth target, is that we can have a conference at the school level between the principal, or among, excuse me, among the principal, the fourth-grade ELA teacher, and the parent. And the team can decide that promotion is in the best interest of the student. The student can be promoted with year-long tutoring in the fifth-grade space, and a plan for improvement from school staff. So, we tentatively have this promotion pathway to explore for our current fourth graders required to demonstrate adequate growth. All right. I want to make sure that we also talk about how we understand exemptions. So, students who score approaching or below will not be retained if they meet the following criteria, or any one of the following criteria. If they have a disability that impacts reading. If they are a student who is an English learner and, that has received less than two years of English instruction, or there is evidence that they have a lack of English proficiency. A student who has been previously retained, or a student with a suspected disability that impacts their literacy development. I want to also call out the misconception at the top. This has been a widespread misconception, but it's one that we're addressing routinely and regularly with parents through one-on-one communication. A 504 does not automatically exempt a student. A 504 that indicates that reading is a life activity impacted by the disability that has caused the enactment of a 504 may exempt a student from retention. But just because you have a 504 does not automatically exempt you from the retention law. That disability that is indicated on the 504 must impact a child's ability to read. So I want to make sure that we all understand that as well. Now let's talk about our timeline for communication. So, as soon as we have confirmation that the bill has become law, we will communicate with our fourth-grade families indicating that there is a promotion pathway for them to consider. We will communicate the promotion pathways we've communicated to you, and then, the week of May 20th, we're anticipating receiving third-grade scores. We've also heard that there may be a push, if this bill becomes law, to receive fourth-grade scores, which will allow us to then communicate with families about the level of proficiency of their individual student. The week of May 20th, we will also communicate to families if students have met those adequate growth in the fourth-grade space, and will then present options within this communication. So for any family who receives a message that indicates that a child was not proficient in the third-grade space, we will present the option for retake. Parents will have to consent for their child to take and participate in the retake assessment, unless the child didn't originally participate in the regular tested window. So if a student was absent, wasn't able to be there for the makeup testing, that student is required to participate in the retake assessment. We'll have all the retake assessment scores back by May 24th, and we will communicate those retake assessment scores to families, which will then indicate next steps according to the child's best score. So if the child reaches proficiency, they'll get a congratulations message. If the child does not reach proficiency and they score approaching, they'll have the options of summer school and/or tutoring. And if the child scores below, they will be informed they have to go to both summer school and participate in year-long tutoring. We have a QR code for any resources, and access to the resources by the Tennessee Department of Ed, and I'm happy to entertain any of the questions that you might have. Ms. Spike? Ms. Spike?
Oh. Sorry. Okay. Um, so first, thank you so much for this. This has been very informative, and I really appreciate this and all of the infographics that go along with it. I think this is going to be very helpful for families in understanding everything. For, for current third grade students that score as approaching, um, did they have the option to do summer school and tutoring, or did they, they have to choose one?
Technically, um, they will choose one first. If we have families who choose summer learning camp and they don't meet the required criteria to be promoted, so if they don't meet the ninety percent attendance rate, or they don't demonstrate adequate growth on the post-test, they will have to then move into year-long tutoring.
So that doesn't necessarily mean they'll be retained, they just have to move into tutoring?
That is right.
Okay.
They will not, they, last year, we did not retain approaching students who did not meet the criteria of summer learning camp. We informed parents that because they did not meet this criteria, they were required to participate in year-long tutoring, but we did not retain them.
Okay. Um, and if they choose tutoring as their pathway to go forward, do they still get an option to kind of like electively sign up for summer school, or is that on like a needs?
So it is on an individualized basis. Students who met initial eligibility criteria for summer learning camp have already been notified. So students, um, there are, there's a criteria list within summer learning camp regarding many factors. Data is part of that. So a student scores on universal spring, uh, or universal reading screeners, we use the winter benchmark because we didn't have spring initially when we registered for summer learning camp. Um, but there's other factors, economically disadvantaged, um, um... Oh, yeah. What did you say? This is why you need a team, okay?
If the student was in a school that, um, less than fifty percent of third through fifth graders were proficient on the TCAP the previous year, they're automatically...
Yes, so there's eligibility criteria, they've received that initial contact saying that they're eligible.
Um, so if they, so if they received that notification and they signed up and everything, but then they get their TCAP score back and they're actually meets expectations, does that take them out of summer school, or do they still get to go to summer?
They have the option to remove themselves from a summer school.
Okay. But if they signed up and they want to do it, they can?
They can remain.
Okay, thank you. Um, as far as catastrophic things, and I know we might not have clear answers on this, um, but is a student, um, losing housing, does that qualify as a catastrophic event?
That is not necessarily explicitly called out. It, it does say, um, catastrophic events as far as, um, death of a family, um, medical diagnosis, and, hang on, I have it. Sorry. It's a lot to make sure you keep in your brain, so I'd rather tell you accurately than inaccurately. I know I have it. Sorry. I'm not sure if housing is on there, and I'm not finding it quickly, so I can get that answer to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And my last, my last question. Um, if, if they have an appeal that is granted through one of these things, and, um, that means they still have to go into tutoring, correct? For fourth grade?
Yes, that is accurate.
Then in fourth grade, do they still have to show adequate growth?
There is currently, as far as appeals go, there is currently no language about having to demonstrate adequate growth. So if an appeal is granted, um, my understanding is that they participate in year-long tutoring and then they are promoted from that point forward.
Okay. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Sorry, I don't have a quick answer.
No, that is, that is okay.
Yeah, if you have it, let's, let's do it.
Corey is very proficient in internet.
So glad that she is.
In the state's FAQ document, document, it does say catastrophic events include, but are not limited to, a death in the immediate family, loss of a family home, or a significant medical diagnosis.
There we go. Thank you. Again, teamwork. Ms. Ewen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I greatly appreciate debunking that myth. Um, the thing is that when we leave here, we will forget. And I would very much like it if we would take it on ourselves to make sure somebody says that at every meeting we ever have. Because we hear over and over and over that our kids can't read, and we know that it's not true, but we don't say it. And we need to say it, and we need to say it a lot. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions? For Dr. Phillips?
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
For that.
I appreciate the partnership.
And answering questions.
Oh, yeah, y'all are, y'all are an awesome team. And thank you for that. I know it helps answer some questions and alleviate some, some myths out there, so I really appreciate you. All right, next, Dr. Adams, do you have an update on custodians?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we currently have sixty-nine vacancies. Uh, three of those schools are exceeding fifty percent, and fifty-one of our schools are now fully staffed.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Triplett, legislative update? Okay, no legislative update this month. Ms. Christie, do you have an update for us for the Strategic Plan Committee? Here we go, I got through that mouthful of title.
Oh, dear, you guys are going to get tired of hearing them from me over here. Um, yes, just a quick update. Um, just to recap a little from the last meeting, um, the committee met on March twenty-fifth to receive and hear proposals from vendors interested in offering their stakeholder engagement services. The committee heard presentations regarding the two proposals that had been submitted at that point at the March twenty-fifth meeting. Since procurement processes require at least three quotes, we met again on April eighth to hear and receive proposals from three additional vendors. Um, all of the proposals are attached to the committee's April eighth meeting agenda. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at them, but they're there. Um, after hearing from a total of five vendors, committee members agreed that we needed some more time for review, so we met again on April eleventh to consider our recommendation to the board regarding the selection of a vendor. The committee considered multiple areas such as pricing, survey development, multimodal strategies, data mythology, evaluation approaches, and references. After short discussion on April eleventh, we were all in agreement on the top three proposals. And after further discussion and consideration on our top three, the committee voted unanimously to recommend Milan Chicago as the vendor for stakeholder engagement. All of the vendors were notified of the committee's recommendation and that any final contract must be approved by the board. We requested that Milan submit a contract for legal review. Um, after a couple of small changes, mostly regarding Tennessee state law, their proposal, the proposed contract is listed and attached for board consideration on the May ninth regular session agenda as item ten E. Following the board vote on Thursday evening, the committee will meet on Friday, May tenth, at ten AM to discuss next steps regarding both stakeholder engagement, uh, which currently appear on the timeline for August and September, and also additional strategic planning processes.
Awesome, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Well, I know we've had, um, a couple board members request a break, so why don't we take a quick break, uh, like ten minutes, and then come back to discuss our regular agenda? Does that sound good with everybody? Awesome. Okay, ten minutes.
All right, welcome back, y'all. We will get into our regular session, session agenda. All right. Item C, one or two. Does anyone have any questions or discussion about either of those? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Bike.
Number two.
Okay.
The CAC. One, I just want to disclose a potentially, a potential, or potentially seen as a conflict. My husband works for them in the nutrition department, and I just want to be very open and clear about that. But I do feel like that I can be objective and impartial and still voting on it. But if anyone feels differently, please let me know before Thursday. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Bike. Three or four? Five or six? Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could we have some clarification on number five, the Train the Trainer Agreement, about what's actually included in that agreement? Is it just future data? I know there was a, there was a trip that was involved, but that was passed, but it's part of that, it's part of the contract language. So I'm trying to figure out what part of that money is future money.
Dr. Ryswick.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Owen. Thank you, Madam Chair. I will tell you, Dr. Brown is actually at a conference tonight, and he will know for sure. I do know to you, what you referenced to, I know Jeremy, one of our, like, went to the conference initially. I don't know, we could find out for sure if, if some of this money covered that conference or if it is training moving forward. I'd have to look at the contract to make sure. But I do know, Dr. Brown talked about, that Jeremy called him from the conference and said, "This is a great, you know, pre, before we have to use any kind of holes, this would be a great thing to do." So, but I'm not positive. We'll find out before Thursday and let you know.
Okay. And just so everybody will understand, the thing that, the thing that caught my eye was that it says that the agreement was made the 26th day of February 2024, and that the training was held April 8th through 9th, and then it had costs for that. It's my understanding that that has already happened and was not actually part of what we're voting on. And what we're voting on is the training materials. So if we could get the clarification on that Thursday, that would be great. Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on. Seven or eight? Nine, oh, Ms. Owen.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Sorry.
Number eight. Number eight is a service site agreement with Relay Graduate School of Education, and I have quite a few concerns with Relay. Everything I've looked at, this looks very much like a Teach for America situation. It doesn't look like we're using really high-quality trainers, and that concerns me if these are going to be folks who are going to be working in Knox County schools. I'd really like our staff to look more into that and see if this is something that we are really going to benefit from, or if it's just going to be sort of a pass-through. Because if we are, if we're just passing staff through, that's not something that's going to build something that's going to retain teachers. That's just going to be a temporary. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Ryswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, and I'll let Ms. Hemelgarne jump in in a second, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is the closeout to, like, this is the last time it'll be on. It's a group of people in their second year, and the agreement is for the AmeriCorps cost. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, Dr. Ryswick, yes. We don't currently have future students or future employees enrolled in the Relay Teacher Residency Program.
Does that mean that we aren't planning to either?
I, I don't know that I would go that far yet. I don't think that we're ruling out teacher prep pathways completely right now. We don't have any, any new teachers currently registered, though. Thank you.
Sorry, can I butt in?
Yeah, yeah.
Just a little insight to that. So I, I just, the genesis of where this all started was, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hemelgarne, was that initially, when the teacher shortages were out there, there were a lot of these kind of smaller programs popping up to have a faster certification. I think our initial reason for using them was because there wasn't a lot of alternatives. And Dave Giac was here today from UT, and what we've really found is that job-embedded program, right, it was right when it was taking off and right when the state board was changing some of the licensure agreements. So I think a lot of it is there's not a need moving forward to use it. But that's why we haven't had a lot of people sign back up. They're pretty much going through a, a local university and going through that. But it, but early on, there weren't a lot of choices, and we were looking at different pathways. So again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was it, and this is the, the last of that group.
Thank you. Nine or 10? 11 or 12? Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions about the scribble software, and I'm not sure if there's someone here to talk to that.
Ms. Lotner, I think she, you might be able to speak to it, correct?
Ms. Owen, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ms. Owen, do you just want me to kind of cover the, the scope of work? Absolutely. So this is really an opportunity for us to operationalize a function within our REA Department. So our REA Department is currently responsible for fielding any of the education verifications that come in through the district. So we receive about 1,500 to 2,000 of these a year, and these are generally from businesses that are reaching out to us to verify that individuals have graduated from a Knox County Schools. That might be a recent graduate. It might also be what we would call a legacy graduate, and so we have files dating back to the 60s. And sometimes we are verifying graduates dating back to the 60s. As of right now, that's being done over the phone. Those requests are coming in through phone, they're coming in through email, they're coming in through fax, which I did not realize we still used.
I didn't either when that was brought up. I'm like, wait a minute.
So, so there are many, many ways to reach us, which we like. What is not necessarily as sustainable as it could be is the fact that that requires a lot of manpower, just in terms of back and forth and capturing a lot of the information. So what this software does is it actually just operationalizes that process. It creates a platform for employers to go on. They can list all of the information that we would need to then be able to run down the necessary education verifications and then fulfill that request. There is a cost involved, but the cost is not incurred by the district. The cost would be shouldered by the business that is making the request. And this is something that we actually found by reaching out to some other partnering, kind of neighboring school districts, asking what they do. And this is how we stumbled upon this particular software program.
Okay. So it would be, it's, it's a streamline of the request. They can't go in and look at the data. So it's not like, it's not like our teacher certifications where anybody can go in and determine whether a teacher has a certification.
Right. So what this does is this actually just captures the information from the employer. We are still responsible, then, for dispersing the actual information. And the only information that would be conveyed is whether or not an individual was a graduate.
Okay. Yep. So if, it sounds to me like if at some point this software became obsolete, that absolutely wouldn't be a problem either.
No, and they're not housing or storing any data either.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Number 12. Does anyone have any discussion or questions on 12? Oh, okay. 13 or 14? 15 or 16? 17 or 18? 19 or 20? Hardin Valley has a lot of, a lot of things coming up. Yeah, exactly. 21 or 22? Or 23? Lots of fun plays coming up. 24 or 25? Or 26? All right, moving on to board policies. A or B? C or D? E or F? G or H? J or K? Or L? All right, moving on to grants. A or B? C or D? E or F? G or H? Moving on to contracts. A or B? C or D? All right, moving on then to regular agenda items. A or B? Our calendars. Yes, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the calendar, the school calendar.
Uh huh.
Can, Dr. Wilson, can you talk about the early release days? I know I asked you about this when we, when we made this change regarding the snow calendar this year and that kind of thing. So can, can you talk about the Teacher Advisory Council? Because I think what we're hearing is different things. So can you just give me some feedback on the thought behind continuing with the early release days?
Sure. So we, again, this year, in, in response to the weather sort of anomaly that we had, we obviously had to lose the second half of our early release days to compensate back some instructional time. This was the second year of the pilot effort of doing that, and so that was our commitment initially, was to say, "Let's try this for a couple of years and see if, if we're seeing results from that." Last year, with, in its first year of implementation, I would say that we did receive some questions and from community members, from some teachers, I think, more around defining how that time was used than anything else. And then this year has been relatively quiet on that front. As a matter of fact, I think largely in conversation with principals, it's been, they were quite sad at the loss of those three days, I think, once we ended up taking them back from weather because of their ability to utilize those for, you know, professional development at the school level, that they deemed important to their own improvement efforts and things like that. Last year with our Teachers Council, the professional development as a whole was a topic of, of conversation quite a bit. And one of their action items, if you recall, and coming back to the board, was about how to best utilize those teaching and learning days. And so a lot of what we heard through the feedback, really across the councils last year, was that, again, they didn't mind engaging in or having that time, but wanted to see that they, you know, again, as we're engaging in professional development, had time to process, time to develop it, take it back into their own planning, and utilize the information that they were engaging in. And so we pushed a lot of that feedback back to our principals, encouraging them to make the time more collaborative, time to extend PLC, you know, data analysis, things like that, that they would normally not have time to do. And again, have had very little negative feedback in, in terms of, any feedback really from, from teachers this year. I, I had conversations with Ms. Hancock last year and have, again, not had any questions asked to that regard. It is my intent, in terms of looking at the calendar, to, to do some additional collection of that feedback from our Teacher Advisory Councils and Family Advisory Councils, which I did last year. The Family Advisory Council, again, I, I asked families to, to speak to, you know, the changes in the calendar and challenges to their schedules and things like that. And again, was not, there was not a, a great reaction to that last year in terms of not supporting the continued use of it. But I have not done that yet in this cycle for this year, and it was my intent to do that, again, since we're adopting for a calendar now for a year out. We would have time to modify that, should we decide not to, not to continue with it.
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you. Yeah, it, of course, a lot of times people don't voice their concerns to the appropriate people or whatever for change to occur, but I've definitely heard from teachers who feel like less professional development, more time with PLCs would be beneficial. That's one of the comments that I've heard, and that, that, but just, I've heard more negative comments than positive, more from teachers than families. I've heard from teachers that students were happy when the days were added back because they don't like their, their classroom time to be disrupted. So, so, yeah, perhaps more feedback from a broader pool of people might be helpful, but definitely getting mixed reviews on that. So there's some disconnect somewhere.
Well, and I'll say this, and I mentioned Ms. Hancock, when we met with our PECA group, which we do monthly for collaborative conferencing, one of the points of conversation that day, too, I think, was to make sure we go back, one, to the, to the original sort of spirit, which was prior to my coming to this role, but my understanding of, you know, why we landed on adding this instructional time, choosing to use some of our additional days in this way, in terms of those, those burnt days that we have, was because of a request from our administrators to, to say that they really don't have a lot of time to, to do some of the work that's, you know, specific to their school and to the needs of their staff and, and at the school level. And I know when we met and we were talking in, in the PECA conversation as well, some of the folks in the room, I think, had understood that the addition of this time would be more independent time to do work in my classroom, to catch up on my grading, things like that. And so I think there has been a difference of expectation in terms of, why did we do this to begin with versus what am I engaging in during this time? And so, you know, clarifying definitions around lots of things. I think, you know, our, our high schools have moved into the academy structure, and so there's small learning community meetings that are part of that. In addition, there are regular PLCs, which are more around your content and, and digging into those areas. The addition of things like early release days is another opportunity with another purpose and focus when you think about professional development. So just organizationally, I think, an aha, if you will, that I had walking out of that meeting is, again, continuing our opportunities to communicate more broadly, both with our administrators, who are definitely the ones planning these days, and then also with our teachers to say, you know, why, you know, the, the why behind these pieces that we have and what their intent is for doing that. But certainly open to casting a wider net on, in terms of feedback, if, if you feel like that's something we should do.
Thank you.
I've heard the same things as Ms. Horn, so I would appreciate that as well. So thanks for bringing that up. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that same thing. We're on opposite sides of the county, and I've heard from parents and teachers, and I'm not hearing from anyone that was sad. It's, we're definitely not hearing that this is being embraced. Thank you.
Thanks. Any more discussion on the calendars? All right. C or D? Mr. Triplet?
Yes, I had a question, probably for Dr. Wilson, about the Charter Review Committee. I know what it is, is what you're doing is basically substitutions for some folks on that, and noticed there was one potential conflict of interest, Ms. Kettrell, and I wondered if I might bring forth a recommendation that Clayton Wood would be a beneficial voice rather than leave somebody on that is a potential conflict of interest. Clayton Wood is the Executive Director of Thrive. They're already a partner with KCS and with a number of KCS schools. They reach out and serve at-risk students, at-risk youth. They have some after-school programs, summer programs, that kind of thing. And those at, that at-risk population is a lot of the, potentially, the target for most of these charter schools, the target population. So I would just make that recommendation, rather than leaving somebody on that is a potential conflict of interest. He might be a, a good, a good choice.
I would support that. I've worked with Mr. Wood and his work through Thrive, so I think he would be a beneficial addition. Ms., Ms. Bike?
I just wanted to speak to Ellie and, and her position and all the work that she's done. I think she does a lot of good work for us, and... I think she does a lot of good work for us, and I think that she does a lot of really great work for those communities that would potentially opt for charter schools, and that her voice is really important, and that if she feels that she can be impartial, that I would still support her in that role.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know both leaders in the community, and both are fantastic leaders and appreciate the work that they do. I think the, I think what Ms. Kitchell was trying to do in her explanation was to share that although there could be a presumed conflict of interest that there's not, and I don't see that there's any reason to remove her when she's saying that there's not a conflict of interest, given the nature of the organization and the systems that are put in place.
Any more discussion on that item? Moving on, I guess. E? I know there's discussion on E, so I will not go to F yet. We will focus on E. Or actually, because they're the same, I mean, there's, there's two resolutions. How do we, we've never had two resolutions on one item, so we'll start with you, Ms. Christie, in your resolution. This will be a new one for us.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I've talked a lot tonight. I'm going to try to keep this brief. I know that, well, first of all, I just want to say that as a board, we are constantly asking our state legislators and local delegation for local control, and would like to acknowledge that this bill does give local control, and that's what we ask of them. And also recognize that not all school districts have the resources that Knox County Schools has. And before I go any further, I did share my resolution with Chief Perry Yard, who's here tonight, and had conversations with Sheriff Spangler and Chief Noel as well in our law department. And I've asked Gary to speak just briefly on the reasons we can't have a lot of public discussions surrounding security measures. Before I continue.
Okay. Mr. Dupler?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Christie. So, and, and, and it's part of the new law. And normally, I don't, I don't review new laws until they're actually new laws. This one was just now, became a public chapter. So, even last week, there was a lot of confusion, I mean, because on the legislative website, it did not have the correct version of the law. So, let me just say that on, at the beginning. And then, the other thing is, you, you know, our school security department does do a great job, and, and, and that's been in law for quite some time. Knox County's been on the forefront of, of, you know, having its own security force, of having an MOU with local law enforcement. That's been in the law, again, for many years at this point. But the new law does add a, a different option, and, but, but what I would caution this board from doing is discussing specifics with regard to school security. I mean, I think, I think we've made it clear over the, over the years, and even this past year, that school security plan is confidential, and this, this law even mentions that even though there's a, there's, there's an option for, for teachers, even that information has to remain confidential. But can this board have a general philosophical discussion and talk about the resolutions that are before the board? Yes. But I would just caution you against specifics as far as school security.
Thank you, Mr. Dupler. So, I just want to be clear on my, my personal intentions with this resolution. I do think there are some parents and teachers and stakeholders that want to see this board make a statement of some type. My resolution was never intended to be a political statement on the Second Amendment or the bill itself. And it was not intended to anger or divide. I understand that issues surrounding security can be bipartisan in nature, but security itself is not. I think we all want the same things, you know, safe environments for kids to learn and thrive. This resolution speaks more to and supports the statements that Dr. Iswick has made. It speaks to our tremendous partnerships with the sheriff's office and KPD. And again, I did speak to both leaders of those organizations last week, and I appreciate their commitment to the safety of our schools and communities and those partnerships. And this resolution speaks to the investment this board has made to prioritize the safety and security of our students, staff, and campuses. And finally, as a mom to a Michigan State student, this resolution speaks to my gratitude for the law enforcement that do respond to these situations. As a mom, I take security very seriously, and, you know, our family has, has lived through a situation like that. Most of you know I'm not a fan of resolutions. I do think, because I heard from so many, I do think this is an important issue, and a lot of people are wanting some reassurances on maybe our comfort level with their security systems in place, which is why I submitted it. That being said, it, the fact that I submitted it was kind of like my compromise. I mean, this is the language that I will support if we have a resolution.
Mr. Triplet?
Yeah, I, I too am not a fan of resolutions, simply, primarily because they don't accomplish a whole lot. We will discuss this and vote on this, and at the end of the day, on Thursday, nothing will change. It will be the same. Also, I don't know that we can discuss this and, and really make, you know, firm statements about what we will do, what we will not do, simply because we don't discuss those things. So, I'm not sure that any resolution is really beneficial, because we, we can't make a clear statement that we are going to do something or we are not going to do something. For one, I, you know, I would, you know, I know that this doesn't support or against, I know that Ms. Bike's resolution, you know, states some things against the law. I, I support the law. I think it made sense for the state of Tennessee to give that freedom to local districts, should they choose to use it. I think Chief Perry Yard and his team and the relationships we've built are tremendous, and we do a great job. And maybe the provisions of this law are not necessary in Knox County. But at the same time, should, should that ever change, I would also support Chief Perry Yard and his decision, if he felt like, based on, you know, certain needs and situations that was necessary. But at the end of the day, none of that would really ever be discussed in public. So, I'm not real sure, you know, you know, we say at the moment, this is the, you know, this is the off, this is the armed personnel in our school, but at the same time, should Chief Perry Yard recommend it, we might make a change in that. And, and none of that would really be done publicly. So, it's almost like this resolution basically would have to say, to be factual, currently the only armed personnel are our, you know, our officers, and if that ever changes, we'll have a discussion in private and figure that out. And I, I just am not sure that there's a real benefit in, in really even having these resolutions, because they don't really accomplish anything, so.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I guess I'll, I'll start with saying that I had no idea that Ms. Christie was going to bring a resolution, so this is in no way my bringing to compete with her or anything like that. I appreciate her sentiment in this. Just one thing that I did want to point out, though, is that on May 10th of last year, 2023, and it's still on the Office of the Governor's website, is Governor Lee signs strong school security, safety measures into law. Talks about expenditures around $230 million, and that, you know, this was somewhat in response to the covenant shoot, covenant shooting, but that had already begun before that, and that this legislation, well, I'm just going to read it because I'm not going to be able to re-sum it very good, because I'm not that good with words. It says, "Following the tragic covenant shooting, Governor Lee worked with the General Assembly to enhance his legislation and increase funding in the fiscal year of 2324 budget to place an armed school resource officer at every Tennessee public school, boost physical school security at public and private schools, and provide additional mental health resources for Tennesseans." And I think that that shows me that that's kind of like statewide, so I really unders, don't completely understand that, you know, some of the more rural places wouldn't have a resource officer or school security, and that if they did, that that should be certainly asked for, but not in the vein of arming our teachers and staff. I think there's a better way to go about it. And, you know, I don't know how we want to do this, because we haven't approached this before, where there are two resolutions that are, are similar but also different, trying to kind of get the same goal. I honestly, I, I really appreciate our school security team. I don't want to talk about the details of our security, whatnot. And I don't see why we couldn't be in favor of both if they couldn't be combined. Ms. Owen, I think, kind of combined them for us, and I do kind of like this. I understand that mine was very strongly worded, and I can often be that way, and, but I'm definitely willing to kind of scale that back. But I do think that not having the option going forward, because I think of the idea of, you know, heaven forbid if something happened to Dr. Iswick, if we had a new superintendent in the future. I'm so sorry. But like, you know, I always think of all the options.
Don't go anywhere, Dr. Watson.
Yeah, you're not going anywhere, but, you know, if in a year or whatnot, we had a new one or new leadership, how, how some of these things would be read and what the will of the board would be, although I know it, it can still change. But I, I do think resolutions are important. I've, I've been hearing from a lot of community members and just from all across the board, and they're scared. And I haven't heard anyone, really, that is in school security or security in general or who works in the schools, reach out and say that they wanted this in Knox County Schools. And so, that's where my language is a little bit more kind of clear-cut in wanting us to say that we are opting out very clearly. And that's kind of my sentiment about it. But I don't know, if we want to keep these as separate or together, I'm not sure, and I don't know how to navigate that.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I looked at the resolutions, and they were so alike and so different, I tried to take the two and kind of squash them together and then make them say the same thing. However, there is one piece to what Mr. Triplet was saying. The thing that I keep hearing from parents and students and grandparents and staff is they want us to say something firm. So, even though Dr. Iswick has said he has no intention, they don't feel that that's firm. I think we all hear it as firm, but I don't think our community hears that. And the only way this board can make a statement that gives Dr. Iswick some real direction, I believe, is through a resolution. So, if in a resolution, this board says, here is what we expect to happen, here's what we want to happen, here's what we are voting to happen, then, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Dupler in a minute, but then I believe that that would be our way of telling Dr. Iswick, here's what we expect. And so, what I didn't find in either of the resolutions was that firmness that said, we're not gonna. I heard that we support what we have, we have plenty, we don't need, but I didn't hear we're not gonna. And so, the last paragraph that I added is, be it further resolved that to maintain the highest possible standards for student safety, school security officers, school resource officers, and other law enforcement officers shall continue to be the only armed personnel allowed on Knox County Schools campuses. Now, that, of course, would not be in perpetuity. It would be until this board said otherwise. So, at some point, a board in the future, or this board, or, you know, whatever board, could say, no, that resolution is being rescinded, or could put a new resolution in place. But as long as this resolution is good, it should be a directive to the superintendent if we chose to use some of this language, that should tell him what to do. And I think if we're going to have a resolution, it should do something. It shouldn't just be a resolution that just doesn't do anything. So, for it to do something, I think we need language in there that, that actually directs. So, Mr. Dupler, would you like to weigh in on that?
Really? Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, I, I mean, I would say that the board can make a statement, and it's a policy decision. It's, it's, whether or not it's legally sufficient, whether or not the board has the power to do so, remains to be seen under this new law.
Yes, I agree. However, we do have the power to direct the superintendent, right?
So, the, the superintendent has specific duties and responsibilities under the law that are generally separate and apart from the board. The superintendent is the board's only employee. So, there is that.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dupler, just to go a little bit further down that path, you and I had a conversation earlier today. The, the law, as, as we understand it, does not mean that districts across our state have to allow for armed teachers with a concealed carry permit with training and all the things, correct? They do not have to do it. They do not have to implement it?
The law does not say shall. It is, it is an option, the way, the way it's worded.
Right. And so, it doesn't say shall, so there's an option, but we don't yet know who the ultimate decision maker is in, within a local LEA regarding whether or not we take that up, whether it is the superintendent, or it is the board, or it's some combination of. There's not a mechanism in the law that enumerates how a district should decide if they take up, take up this law or not, correct?
I'll just, probably the best thing to do is just, is just read the law. Option, option one, which is actually A2, is the one that preexists, and that's the one that talks about an MOU with the board and local law enforcement. And it talks about using law enforcement officers or former law enforcement officers. So, that already existed. The option that, that we're discussing, that, that the board is discussing right now is actually A1. And that option talks about, by my count, five different requirements. One is a valid handgun carry permit. Two is permission from the director of schools, the principal of the school, and the chief of the appropriate law enforcement agency. The third requirement is basically a background check and a fairly intensive one, fingerprints and all. The fourth requirement is a psych test that is, that is commonly given to law enforcement. And the fifth requirement is training, which the, whatever board, you know, this board, if, if, if they were to do it, would be involved in that training. The requirements of that training, that's 40 hours initially and then 40 hours every year. That's what it says.
So, I mean, it was reported that several districts across the state took quick action to basically say they weren't going to do that. Dr. Iswick spoke to the issue. Didn't speak to it definitively, but said, we want more information. The public chapter comes out today. But I don't think there's any clarity in the way that you're responding to myself and Ms. Owen about whether or not the board actually has the authority to direct Dr. Iswick on this particular issue or not. Is that fair?
There is no clarity. There is no clarity.
That's what I'm saying.
That's right. I mean, you know, like I said at the beginning, I like to work with these laws after they've been out a while.
Sure.
And digest them and work with the state. I don't know if there's state guidance coming out regarding this law.
Right.
I mean, what I can tell you right now is that under option A1, it doesn't talk about the LEA.
Yep.
So that's to be determined.
Right. Yeah, that's what I want to be clear about, is that there's not any clarity on that particular matter, which I think is one of the reasons why we have two, now possibly three, resolutions before us, because there's not a clarity. And to Ms. Christie's point earlier, I mean, I also feel, from what I'm hearing in the community, that people want to know where we stand, and I think that's, a resolution's a perfect tool for that. I know we've had many conversations over the years about how effective they can be or not, but one thing they are certainly effective in is to let a community know where the board as a whole stands, because whatever the resolution passes, and then that's sending a clear message. I also agree with Ms. Owen that I felt like maybe some combination of the two resolutions could be helpful. I know I got close to 100 emails, I don't know how many everybody else got, related to this particular issue. Out of my count, I only had two that spoke about it in the affirmative, that they would like to see this occur, and I appreciated that feedback as well. But by and large, people in the community, both from people who are working within the district and with parents in the community and with grandparents in the community, there's some strong reservation about moving forward with this. And I appreciate our law enforcement officers and our security personnel, and Dr. Reiswick's already getting ahead and talking to those different stakeholders and getting their feedback. And I think it makes a lot of common sense that we don't have some of the challenges that maybe some rural communities do in terms of having armed personnel within our schools to help keep our schools safe. I don't think there's a need for this in this community, and I think the community is asking the board to make a statement on it. I would be in support of a resolution that speaks to that, in terms of which resolution or how it's worded. You know, I think probably there's some work to do. It's probably only gotten more complicated now that we have three different versions that we're looking at. To me, the challenge, since we're speaking directly to Ms. Christie's, to me, the only challenge with your resolution, Ms. Christie, is it doesn't actually speak in any of the whereas to the actual law, and I think that's what people's concern is. It's more of a general statement about appreciating our officers and the work that they do. To me, if there was some reference to the law and why this is being spoken about right now, and then, and I think the only thing that needs to happen then is then, in the now therefore be it resolved, that the word "only," to me, that's also missing, and I think that's kind of the intent, is to say, at least for now, to Ms. Owen's point, that we're saying only law enforcement, security resource officers would be armed in our schools, because obviously this law provides another pathway, as Dr. or as Gary Dupler enumerated. And so if we're not choosing option 1, we probably should say, but we are choosing the other option, and we want to remain steadfast in that, so.
Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do believe we need a resolution. In the absence of policy, we have a statement from our superintendent, which I appreciate, but we don't have anything else other than the law. And we've had a number, I've had a number of people in the community, all over the county, who contacted me and want a statement. And I have not seen any that have said they wanted to have option 1, I think it was option 1, but I'm not saying there are not any. From my perspective, I do agree that Knox County Schools does not need to have any other security than we currently have, and that we leave it to our, those who we pay to make those decisions and then advise. And our superintendent has made advisement. So I think that at this point, having a resolution to state that, it's not policy, but it is the statement of the board, and we said that to, we're saying that to the community. So I would support the hybrid, or the one we have in writing, I would support that, primarily because it, once again, it does speak to the law. It acknowledges the law, and the law is the law. So, you know, I'm not debating the law. My thought process is, how do we best serve Knox County? And that is, that last statement, be it further resolved, to me, that needs to be heard, that we care about to maintain the highest possible standards for student safety. We have the schools' security officers, schools' resource officers, and other law enforcement officers shall continue to be the only armed personnel allowed on Knox County schools' campuses. And I think that's a statement that we say is clear, is concise, and once again, we understand it's a resolution, and it can be revisited if necessary. But we don't have any doubt that anyone knows when the Knox County School Board stands.
Thank you. Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, as Mr. Dupler said, there is a lack of clarity on this law. And I also agree with what he said, I believe, at the very beginning, and I think Mr. Triplet alluded to it. I don't think it's wise to discuss security measures in a public forum, in any form or fashion. I think this board, our community, trusts the KCS security team. They do a phenomenal job, and I think that we need to continue to trust the superintendent and the security team to make decisions in the best interest of our students. And so I think we need to be very cautious about making definitive statements in a public meeting, when we can have security conversations otherwise.
Mr. Triplet?
Mr. Dupler, if we were to pass this resolution and definitively say we are not going to use the provisions in this law, would we have to rescind that resolution, should there ever come a need arise to make a change in that?
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. I mean, again, I think that's part of the problem here. I mean, I think that's what, this law is so new that it's really unclear as to whether or not the board... Let me say this, the board can make whatever statement the board wants to make, right? But the question will then be, how does that compute legally in a court of law? And I think your question sums that up, which is, you know, will the board have to rescind it at some point? Maybe, maybe not. Because the way this is, the way this law is written, most of it, if not all of it, would have to be done outside of the public view, because this law has a very, you know, prominent provision about confidentiality. So that's why I say it's just, it's too early to tell at this point. But if this board wants to make that statement, the board can certainly make that statement. And when I say it's a policy decision, I mean, this board is a policymaking body. This board doesn't make law. So it's not a, it wouldn't be a specific board policy, but it would be the board making a decision on a policy decision, you know, something the board does.
I just, if you look at Section D under Section 1, letter D, it says, the following is confidential, not open for public inspection. There's a whole section there that if we ever, if there was ever a change made to that, we would not even have this discussion in this room, you know?
In public, yeah.
And so it would all have to be done privately. So to make a public statement and then potentially go back on it and pri... I don't know, it just doesn't seem like a wise move. Pardon? Sure, if you're in Section 1, it's actually at the bottom of the second page, letter D, and it lists all the things that, should someone decide to use the provisions in this law, they wouldn't, all of these things would have to be kept confidential. So it just seems, it just doesn't seem appropriate to make a statement in public that, hey, we're not going to use the provisions of this law, then should the time come where we decide to, and maybe we never decide to, I mean, that's fine, right? That's Chief Perryard, his team, I mean, you know, they know security. They do a lot of security things we know and a lot of security things we don't know. But if we ever decide to use the provisions of this law, we won't have that discussion, I don't think we'll have that discussion publicly. So it just seems, you know, counterproductive to make a statement publicly and then rescind it privately, if we were ever to do that. So I just, I think we just table all those resolutions for another time, let the law play out, maybe we get some firm understanding of the law at some point and feel like we want to come back to it. But I think at this point, it's too early to make those statements without really understanding how it's all going to play out.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Triplet and Ms. Warren, respectfully, I think we're talking about two different things. I don't think, I don't think anybody's trying to discuss the nuance of our security. Also don't think anybody's trying to say, at some point, we'll discuss the provisions in Item D that you just spoke about. I mean, if at some point, the district decided to implement option 1, as Mr. Dupler called it, then there would be, I'm sure there would be a public statement saying, hey, we're going to implement option 1. Everything after that would not be public. In the same way, Dr. Reiswick's already made a public statement saying he doesn't think we should implement option 1. At some point, he could change his mind and say, I think we should. To me, that's the only thing the resolution is doing. It's not, neither, none of the three resolutions I've seen get into any of the specifics of Item D or any of our particular approaches to security. So I appreciate what you're saying, that yes, there's things that are off the table that we can't speak about publicly. This resolution is not one of them, so.
I agree with Mr. Watson. I think that the reference you made is about those specific things for a specific individual. It's not whether or not this district is going to affirm what our superintendent said or not affirm. I think the resolution just affirmed what the superintendent said. And I took what he said as firm, quite honestly. And I think that if, as a parent, let's just say, if we were to pass this, pass a resolution saying only armed officers, then parents and citizens know that teachers are not going to have guns legally in schools. If we do something different, then they'll know we will have. The parents, the teachers have the possibility. They don't want to know which teachers it are and what schools it are, because the way the law reads, I understand, is that superintendent has a say-so in the decision, the principal has a say-so in the decision, and law enforcement agencies have say-so in the decision. And so it doesn't say who that person is, and so I think that confidentiality does not apply there. But I think that as a citizen, as a parent, even as a staff person in a school, I should have a knowledge of whether or not this school system is supporting having armed teachers. And that is what I've heard from a number of folk. So let's have the courage to say, hey, this is how we feel. If we feel like otherwise, then say so. But bottom line is, is that the public want to know, and we do that. One of the ways we do that is in the form of a resolution, and that's what I think we ought to do. Let's let I, let's make the statement of what we're going to do, how we feel about this. And so at this point, I'm not trying to debate the law once again. I'm just saying, in Knox County, I believe that we do not need to arm teachers. That's how I feel, and that's the statement I'd like for this board to make.
Ms. Owen? Thank you, Reverend Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Triplet, maybe you could help us get some clarity. In your discussions with other boards across the state each month, did they discuss this law and how they felt like it would impact them?
I mean, most folks at TSBA are against the law, so, I mean, that's primarily where it lies. There are some districts that felt like that it, you know, in some of the things I heard or read that felt like the, there are folks that felt like I do, that the provisions of the law made sense to pass to give freedom to local districts to make the decision for themselves.
I guess I'm thinking more of the impact. Did you discuss any impacts, more than, I'm not really thinking about the political for or against, but how they felt like their districts would be impacted?
Not necessarily, no. No, I don't recall anything about, you know, like, are you talking about like students being afraid and that kind of thing, or?
That, or, you know, you know, the, like, what we're talking about, the transparency issues.
Yeah, not, I mean, folks did talk about the freedom to discuss security publicly. Probably not at the detail we were discussing it, though.
Okay. And I mean, I know it went through a lot of amendments.
Yeah, there was a bunch of changes from the beginning to the end.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is my last comment. And, Mr. Triplet, you just made the statement that people felt like it was important to have the freedom to choose, and I think that's what the law is doing, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the law was not passed and mandated that all school systems across our state allow for concealed carry permits with teachers, with all the other provisions. And so, again, just harkening back to the purpose of a resolution, we, it sounds like we do have some freedom as a district, and I think it's important for Dr. Reiswick to share where he stands on that, and he has, and I think it's also important for us as a board to make a statement about where we stand on that, too, because, to Reverend Butler's point, there will be some confusion about it and some concern that, especially presented with the opportunity to pass a resolution, if the board chose not to, that's going to send an unintended message. It's going to, it's going to make people feel like, oh, well, maybe they are going to try to do this thing, right? Like, they couldn't make a statement saying they're not, so that must mean they are. I mean, we know how communications work and how concerns can travel through communities, especially when there's not clarity. We've all heard the phrase, clear is kind, and I think this is an opportunity for us to be kind, so.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I do want to say that, you know, I want to thank the state for passing this bill, and like Mr. Triplet, I support the legislation because it does allow each individual district to make a determination on what's best for their community. I firmly believe in local control and allowing those districts' parents, teachers, staff to be able to make those decisions. And it is my understanding that we have, I think, 500 schools in Tennessee that currently do not have a trained officer in the schools, and I think that this bill will help fill in the gaps statewide. With that said, I do think our schools are blessed to have highly trained armed security officers in every school, along with the support from our sheriff's office and the city of Knoxville. Every year, I know we're constantly evaluating additional security protocols to keep everybody safe, and because of our robust security procedures and continued partnerships, I will be supporting Ms. Christie's resolution. At the same time, though, I do want to remind everybody that two years ago, the mayor of Knoxville did cancel our MOU, which provided the Knoxville police in some of our schools. Luckily, she did change her mind, and we do currently get the needed support from the KPD. But if that were to change in the future, I would change my vote on this. I think protecting our children, teachers, and staff is our highest priority, and we must continue to stay on top of our security procedures. We want to make sure that all of our kids and all of our staff, you know, go into a warm, welcoming environment, and that they return home safe at night to their loved ones. So, does anybody else have any discussion? Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that when I looked at Ms. Christie's, the only thing was is that the final whereas would have only in there, only armed, the only law enforcement that we have been approved.
Anyone else? Moving on to F. I know we've had a robust discussion on this, so I'm not... I feel like, it would just be like, yeah, continuation of the current conver- like, yeah, continuation of the current conversation. Ms. Pike?
I'm not going to talk too long on it, because I know we already had a conversation on this, but I guess, just to add that, I guess, I agree with Reverend Butler and the others that said that if Ms. Christie's had had only, that I feel like it would be a little bit more firm and a little bit more, help the community know that we were, you know, saying a certain thing. And I think that it's really important for the will of the board to be public. I know that our security is private, but I think that this is where we are public, and that this is what we do for our constituents, to let them know what we are guiding the superintendent and what, what our feelings are as a body, and not just as individuals. And I think resolutions are very important. You know, I know with third grade, we did that resolution, and while nothing changes overnight, we all know nothing changes overnight, and that change is incremental, but we have seen a lot of movement with third and fourth grade retention, and I think it is because of speaking up and having a voice to a body, and, you know, TSBA ended up taking our resolution and using it as a part of their legislative priorities and advocating on behalf of our students. And that's where I think that having a voice and having a stance that's public is really important. And then also, just as a parent myself, I went to high school in Hawkins County, and it's, it's different there, for sure, and certainly, there were, there were plenty of guns everywhere. And I come from a family of hunters and gun owners and all the things. And, and so, I get it, but that was also 25 years ago, and we're in a different time now. I never had to go through active shooter drills. My children do, though, and hearing them talk about it. And I haven't told my kids about this law, I haven't discussed it with them, and I hope that they, I've hoped that they haven't heard it, heard about it, because my daughter has severe anxiety, and I think that this would only further that anxiety, to have the, just thought of like, oh, no, does my teacher, is my teacher carrying a gun right now? And, and that's, that's not really what I want to do for our students, is to, to leave that open, that possibility open as they're walking through. I've talked to some school counselors and social workers that say that, you know, even in elementary schools, that the students will often be actively talking about wanting to grab the security officer's weapons, and having plans in place for that. So, if that's elementary school, I'm sure that's middle school and high school. Had the pleasure of talking to some of our officers before the meeting, and to hear about, you know, some of the training that they go through, and I really appreciate them. And that's where I really do love the sentiment of Ms. Christie's resolution, because I support them, I think we all support them, I think that's why we gave them that big raise last year. All right, I hope it was seen as big. Yeah, I know. And, and so, I would like for us to say something that does feel definitive to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pike. Anyone else? Oh, Ms. Christie? It's, what's weird is, like, your name is coming up here, but you're, oh, maybe your battery. Oh, look at Ms. Cote, she's going to bring you her entire microphone. She does. She does. So kind, Ms. Cote.
All right, I'll be, I'll be Ms. Cote for a moment. I just, to be clear, to finish, because I know a lot's been said about resolutions and sending a strong message. I've never said I oppose this bill, again. Tennessee's a large state, and district resources vary. I do think, ultimately, we all have the same goal, but, you know, I've never said I oppose this bill. In drafting this resolution, because I did feel like people wanted to hear from the board, I tried to draft it in a way that I felt most people could at least support the content of the resolution itself, whether you are a fan of resolutions or not. So, it was intentionally drafted the way it was, just say that. As far as the language in the bill goes, again, I shared it with the Law Department, I shared it with our security chief, I shared it with Sheriff Spangler, I shared it with Chief Noel. No one voiced any concerns about any of the wording in this resolution. And, again, I, I feel comfortable with the wording in mine, and, but just, just for everyone to know, that, that was the intent. And I did try to draft it in a way where, in a time where the board can't always come together on things, that, you know, maybe we could.
Yeah. Yeah. I do agree with that. Thank you for, Ms. Christie, for adding that clarification. I completely agree. Anyone else have any more discussion? Moving on to public forum, Mr. Triplett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tim Cathcart, I think somebody said he was not here.
Nope.
Okay. And I have Kayla McFady. And if you will state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Dr. Kayla McFady. Thank you guys so much for taking my phone calls these past couple weeks. I just sat and listened to the whole discussion on arming teachers bill, and I think you guys covered it. One clear thing, though, that I do want to bring up is, I'm coming to you as a mother of three that are in Knox County schools, and I can attest to the fact that we're fearful. You know, when we send our kids to school, our biggest fear is, is whether or not we're going to get our kids back at the end of the day. The chances are low, but just having those chances there make us fearful. With this bill and uncertainty with whether or not Knox County's going to go through with it, it adds another level of fear. And I understand that this is a statewide law, but Knoxville is a community. And I think that kind of hinting at what is going on without giving us a definitive statement creates a barrier between something that's going to make us feel a little bit more safe, sending our kids to school, and I think it interrupts that trust that exists between the superintendent, that exists between the school board and us as parents. And so, I, I can speak for a very large community here of parents that really, really want that statement. And Dr. Reiswick, thank you so much for your statement that you did make, but we're looking for just a little bit more, just something that says, hey, we're not going to do this. Mr. Triplett, I hear what you're saying. I do think that in the future, if this were to change, we cross that bridge and we get there. But what we're looking for right now is that security of, we trust our security team, and we're not going to arm teachers. And that's what, that's what we're working for, or what we're looking for. So, thank you. I think you guys covered the rest of all, everything that I wanted to speak on, but that statement would go a really far way for us. Thanks.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you. Moving on to board forum. Celeste?
Regarding the topic we've been discussing, I would just like to say that I have had students come up to me, asking me about what the Tennessee legislature has passed, because they don't like the idea of their teachers carrying guns. And with that in mind, I think it would be wise to release a resolution on this topic that is more definite, more definitive, in order to put the students' minds at ease. Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste. Reverend Butler?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Knox County Schools for caring for our kids in the way that they do. And we've, since I've been on the board, we've talked about a lot of things. And I like the fact that we find a way, our way back to, to our students. And so, I just would like, for whatever we talk about, and I just, I'm going to go on this limb and say, that it not be about politics, it be about our students. And this is how I would like, I would like to approach everything. And I'm not saying, no one else is not doing it, I'm just saying, I appreciate when we find ourselves back saying, how does this best serve our students and our families? And that's, that's something I think that we've, we've done more consistently than not. So, I just want us to keep on thinking in those terms, no matter what comes along. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Butler, for that. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a little, little different topic, sorry. This past week, well, first, let's talk about the accessibility we were talking about earlier. At the beginning of this meeting, we looked at communication, we talked about ways that we are making things more accessible for families, and I appreciate that technology and that we are embracing that. However, I think it's really important that we deeply understand that when we use only technology for accessibility, we are creating a barrier to people who don't have access to the technology. So, I would like us to really keep that in mind, and remember that when we have a solution for parents to do something as simple as a summer camp signup, that it cannot ever just be a technology solution. There has to always be another way. They have to either be able to call a person, or talk to a person, or have a paper form. Those things are important to people who don't have access to technology. We had a significant number of students who could not sign up for summer camp, because the only way they were being allowed to sign up was through an app on a phone. And for parents who don't have a phone, that's an impossible ask. So, anytime we are looking at making things more accessible and making things easier, let's be really sure that we are not taking away the easiest and most accessible thing they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in the spirit of National Teacher Appreciation Week, my daughter's also graduating this year, and just reflecting on all the teachers that have impacted her and my other kids in Knox County schools, and just wanted to give a shout out and a big thank you, especially to Mr. Carpenter at West. He's had the biggest impact on Ava. But what's even cooler about that is my wife taught him in middle school, so, full circle. We appreciate the teachers. Thank you.
That's awesome. Mr. Triplett?
Yes, I wanted to make the board aware, this month is actually Brain Cancer Awareness Month, and we have a teacher who happens to live in my district and work in Ms. Pike's district, who has been affected by this disease, she's lost her brother, as well as a former student to brain cancer. And so, I'm wearing this ribbon, and Ms. Pike is in gray, just to recognize this month and to honor those that she's lost, and, and encourage those that are seeking a cure.
Thank you for that, Mr. Triplett. I really appreciate you bringing awareness to that. Ms. Pike?
I guess, in adding to that, Dr. Reese had shared some stuff with us and some statistics that I didn't even realize, that, and a conversation that, you know, we all had earlier about this, that it really touches all of us much more than we realize. In 2003, an estimated 24,810 people in the U.S. were diagnosed with primary cancerous tumors of the brain and spinal cord. The estimated number of new cases in 2024 is expected to be around 25,400, while only making up 1.3% of all new cancer case, cases. The estimated five-year survival rate is only 33.4%. So, very serious, and I appreciate Mr. Triplett, you know, sharing in the, bringing awareness to this, and also Dr. Reese in bringing this to us.
Thank you, Ms. Pike. Ms. Horn?
Thank you. I didn't realize that was this month until today, this afternoon, and I've lost two friends recently, Linda and Judy, and another friend, Susan, who's struggling with brain cancer. So, it certainly does hit very close to home. So, thank you for making me aware of that, and, so, anyway, now, let me think, what was I going to talk about? Oh, the, thank you for the Castle presentation. I really, really appreciated hearing that. I appreciate the superintendent putting that in place, and truly wanting and having a spirit of continuous improvement, wanting to hear the feedback. It was really nice to hear them say that they felt like, that their feedback was valued. And I think all four presentations, that you, it was obvious they had fantastic conversations, brought out really relevant, great, practical points, and had great action points. So, I think this is just such a great way to really involve the public, and, excuse me, one of the things I've seen as I've been on this board is that we really are better the more, the more we have more stakeholder voices at the table. So, I think that this is just a great way to get those, those are, you know, they talked about very common things that I think we all hear in the community, but it's difficult to have a place to bring those. So, I really, I really appreciate that, that you've put that in place, and all the time and effort that, that you've put in quarry to make sure that those, those meetings happen, and I, I think that's valuable information they brought, and just valuable perspectives. So, thank you for that. And happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all the teachers. Thank you.
I'm in, Ms. Horn. Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie?
I just want to echo what everyone said, and especially Ms. Horn. I thought that presentation was incredible. And when I was looking at the, the members of each committee, I, what impressive committee members. They're, they're very impressive. And I love, you could tell just by their, their passion, that they were so excited about each of these issues, and really, really wanting to be a part of it. So, I was excited to hear those. And again, just want to wish all our teachers a happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and graduations and proms and all the end-of-the-year things, it's all, all really cool things going on. So, with that, we are adjourned until Thursday. See you guys Thursday.